Second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. unanimous decision, thank you so much. Number four is the March twenty twenty-three executive session minutes. Council, you have a copy of those minutes in front of you. Once you've read over them, ask that you assign them and pass them to your left. I'm going to turn the motion down a second now to approve the executive session minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second, although any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. unanimous decision, thank you so much. Supervising report for Mr. Lamar Callaway. Mr. Callaway, um, at the end of your report, asked that you would introduce, um, I forgot his name, what's his name?
Massey Hughes.
Yes, sir.
My plan, my plan to do that.
I'll bring him up after you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors, good to be with you tonight. My plan tonight is to discuss to you the finished water storage facilities here at the city of Greensboro. We currently have a five hundred thousand gallon storage tank, uh, ground concrete tank at the water treatment plant. Uh, we maintain that tank ourselves. We, uh, we also have a five hundred thousand gallon elevated water tank out at Home Depot, south of I-20. Next, we have a two hundred and fifty thousand gallon elevated water tank in the middle of the city of Greensboro, behind Walgreens on East Street, and we reference that tank as the main tank. And then we have a two hundred and fifty thousand gallon storage tank out behind Cotton's Corner, and we reference that as the east tank. And then last of all, we have a hundred thousand gallon, uh, tank, uh, in the industrial, on Industrial Boulevard over by the jail. That's a small tank, but it regulates our pressure, so we have that tank, we call that the west tank. In the past, we have had different companies wash out, pressure wash, patch, and paint these tanks many times. We've actually had a full maintenance program before. I feel that these tanks are very valuable to the assets of the city of Greensboro, not only monetarily, but also very important to the citizens of Greensboro, their health and their well-being. With, with all that said, I want to introduce to you tonight Massey Hughes, he's with American Tank Maintenance Company. Massey?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? I apologize for forgetting your name, your card is right here in front of me.
Oh, that's okay. They shouldn't call me a bad name. All right, um, good evening, like Lamar said, my name's Massey Hughes, I'm with American Tank Maintenance. Uh, a little bit about myself, I'm retired military, I flew helicopter for twenty-one years in the Navy, and I've been doing this for over seventeen years. I'm going to talk a little bit of, oops. So I'm going to talk about American Tank Maintenance, and what we do, and how we do it, and how we can help the city of Greensboro, um, protect their assets, and actually save a significant amount of money. We're American-owned, Georgia-based, we're literally only thirty minutes from you guys, and out of Eaton, that's where all my crews come out of. We established ourselves to maintain tradition, pride, and excellence in the, in the commitment to the water tank industry. What does that mean? We specialize in maintaining water tanks, we do not build them, we maintain them for short-term, long-term maintenance. I'll get into what we can do. My team has over two hundred years of experience in the industry. We build business relationships based on trust and integrity, and what that means to us is our handshake and our word actually means something. Okay, so we're American-owned, and we stand behind what we say. We're focused in the southeast region, Georgia, Tennessee, Mississippi, Alabama, Florida, South Carolina, North Carolina. Um, and we are not a nationwide company, people ask us all the time, and we don't want to be a nationwide company. We want to be able to tend to our customers' needs. We currently maintain over a thousand tanks in the southeast, and we've never had a maintenance program canceled. So our mission statement talks about world-class customer service, you're going to hear me talk about that a little bit more at length. Professional and quality work, we know that bad news travels faster than good news, so we don't want bad news, we want all good news. Be able to maintain your, your water tanks properly, and on best price. We've been doing this for a very long time, like I said, I got people over twenty years of experience in my team. We understand the challenges that municipalities, utility districts, cities now have when maintaining their assets. As far as capabilities, we can do anything from a visual inspection, ROVs, all the way up to a full lead abatement containment. Okay, and we actually did ROV inspections on your tanks. So we're committed to world-class customer service and building strong, long-term relationships. We don't look at this as like a fire and forget, we come paint your tank, and you never hear from us again. This is a professional service, a long-term, um, relationship where we are responsible for your tanks, and I'll get into the details of that. Okay. Um, our inspection reports are written by tank people, that means that, uh, when the inspection reports come in, it's not somebody just cutting a patient and putting a report. We actually review them, the engineers review them, we look at what work needs to be done, and that's where the task lists are developed. We're committed to timely response, that's one reason why we don't want to be a nationwide company, we want to be able to attend our customers' needs as quickly as possible. Several months ago, we had a customer on a Wednesday night called us, and somebody shot a hole in their tank. We were there that morning, Thursday morning, and we were there to fix it before the tank was even drained. So that's our promise to our customers, is to be timely response to your concerns. Uh, every year, we do an annual review of your account, and that could be at a board meeting like this, it could be one-on-one, or it could be in a work session, however you want it to be. But it's an opportunity to talk about what work's been done, what works coming up, and discuss any issues there may be on either side. It's a very transparent type of discussion. Uh, we currently maintain over a thousand maintenance programs, that number will be twelve hundred by the end of the year, and we've never had a, a program canceled. So a maintenance program is also called an asset management program. What does that do? That, we, we build this asset management program around what AWWA is concerned about, which is American Water Works Association. They're focused on safety, sanitary, structural coatings, and security of your water tanks. All of those can become very, very expensive if they're not maintained properly, specifically the coatings, uh, and the structural stuff. Maintenance program summary of coverage. It's a full-service, comprehensive tank maintenance from the origination date. All your maintenance fees are fixed, you're protected against future increases in industry. Since I met little mayor the last time, we've already had an increase from our coatings folks. So that protects you against all of that. Annual inspections, so we inspect your tank every year, you get a detailed report. One year we do a visual, the next year we do a washout, where the tank is drained, we clean it out. It's proactive short and long-term maintenance, all your future exterior and interior renovations are included in the, in the program. Emergency service, emergency repairs, ongoing maintenance. So whenever we come in and do inspections or washouts, we're doing ongoing preventative-type maintenance on these tanks to keep them in the best possible shape. We assume full risk of premature failure, that's a fancy way of saying lifetime warranty, but the bottom line is as long as you're under maintenance program, if I paint that tank today, and in four years it fails, it's our problem, not yours, doesn't cost you a dime. Okay, bottom line for you all, for, for Lamar and everybody in the city, it's hassle-free tank maintenance. Okay, this is just a real quick reference list, and I'll show this again later. But the ones that are highlighted in yellow are within, I think, fifty miles from you all here. So we have a very lo- large list, and this is just a partial list, but like I said, the yellow ones are in your backyard essentially. Uh, Newton County, Brazelton, the Coney County, Danielsville, you can read the list as well as I can. But a lot of customers, anywhere from one tank to eighteen tanks, so a very large customer base, cities, towns, counties, um, municipal systems and such. So Lamar talked about your tanks earlier, so you have west tank is a hundred, town tanks two hundred and fifty, Home Depot's five hundred, and your east tank is two fifty. Years one through four, you have three exteriors that need to be done, and two interiors, misspelled, renovated. You basically have over half a million dollars worth of work that needs to be done on these two tanks, and I'm going to show you some details here in a moment. So I'm going to go through some pictures, I'm going to go through these, in the effort of time, the mayor asked me to be quick, I'm going to go through these pretty quick. On your, uh, place there, you've got some interior pictures, okay? I didn't put those in here, um, but you've got some interior pictures to see what's going on with interior conditions. They all need to be washed out, there needs to be some ongoing maintenance, some need interior renovations. So, and it's broken down by tank, and you can see those were actually taken by a underwater drone. So what I do have is some pictures of the exterior. Okay, the west tank, and you hear me talk about this a little later, is in good shape, it's not due for anything now. So what we've done is put this under a base fee, which means there's no renovation cost for this tank at all. We're going to put it under a base fee, and we're going to cover all your future work, all your washouts, all your future paint jobs, all your future interiors. It's significant savings in the fact that we're allowing it to put this over as a base fee and not have a renovation cost. This tank was painted about four years ago. It's an aluminum coating, so it's in pretty decent shape, there's a couple areas that need to be touched up, nothing major. The stuff you see up there is from birds. That's the hatch, so like, again, I've cut the pictures down a lot. Here's the east tank, okay, this is another aluminum tank, okay? And I'm going to say this, but I don't want people to be warned, this tank has lead on the exterior, okay? It is not a big deal, because we're going to overcoat this tank encapsulate for that, I just want to make sure that's very well known. The other good news story here is all your tanks need to be renovated, but they all can be overcoated, okay? Which is a much cheaper solution as to having to blast them down to bare metal, contain them, and do a full three-coat system on them. It's two and a half times the cost of an overcoat to do a containment and full lead abatement, or full containment and three-coat system. So you want to be able to overcoat these tanks, these tanks can be overcoated, so that's, that's very good news. But you can see here, you've got a lot of vines growing on the tank, it's affecting the coatings. You're peeling the, the aluminum coating away from the primer, you can see the orange there, that's the primer. It's all over the tank, occurring in numerous areas. So what happens here is these areas are going to get progressively worse, because moisture's going to get behind the coatings, and they're going to start peeling, it's going to become a pinpoint, it's going to become a quarter, baseball, softball, next to another whole sheet's coming off of that area, and that's the typical pattern. More vines on the riser, there's some areas that need to be, you know, touched up and overcoated. All of these tanks will receive a full pressure wash, hand tool, power tool, and a single, a one-coat system, so they'll all look brand new when it's all said and done. The interiors will all receive a SP ten near-white blast, blasted down to near, to a near-white metal, and a two-coat epoxy system, they'll be completely brand new on the inside, compared to what the pictures you're seeing in front of you. Let's look at the bottom of the bowl. Now we're up top, you see a lot of fading, a lot of chalking, no major structural problems, some rust and corrosion. Lot of sediment in the, in the catwalk area, that's just due from age, so that'll all be removed. Some rust right there in the catwalk, and some exposed steel. That's the manway, rooftop on the ladder. This is an old-style vent, needs to be replaced and will be. Here's your Home Depot tank. Okay, initially looking at this tank, it looks pretty good from afar, but this tank is seventeen years old. It's well beyond its life expectancy on an exterior coating. You're, it's fortunate for you that it can be overcoated, so this is a great time to overcoat it, it'll look nice and shiny and brand new again, and you won't have to blast it. So if we properly maintain a tank, we can overcoat a tank three or four cycles, which means thirty or forty years, okay? So that's good news for, for Greensboro. But you'll see there's a lot of rust and corrosion in areas, you actually have mildew and, and lichens growing on this tank. If you're not familiar with what lichens are, they're basically a fungus, grows in rocks and trees, well, they grow on water tanks too. So the exterior coatings are starting to chalk out, nothing major, but this tank needs to be painted now, so we can prevent that coating from fail, from failing. You can see the legs are getting mildewy, which means when these tanks are brand new, they're nice and shiny, and the coatings are slick, nothing attaches to them. As they break, start to break down, they become porous, the moisture, the debris, air pollution, things start to attach themselves to it, and that's where you start getting the mold, the mildew, and the, the, uh, lichens growing on these tanks. And once that starts doing that, it progressive, progresses rapidly. Your logo's chalked out. There's some more lichens growing in the catwalks, that's going to, that's destroying the coatings there in the catwalk. Closer look. This is an example of what's starting to happen when these coatings fail, that's a pinpoint, moisture got behind it, and it's starting to peel and flake, and it's going to become bigger and bigger, and, and raw steels can be exposed. There's more lichens on the top of the tank. All right, town tank, so the town tank's the worst tank of all. Um, and you'll see that, that's the hatch, a lot, a lot of damage, a lot of rust and corrosion in the hatch. Lot of failures in the coatings. Lot of blisters that are getting larger and larger, now you have exposed primer and exposed steel in some areas. Other areas are failing. There's the mildew and mold that's collecting on the tank. A lot of times when they're surrounded by foliage, you're going to get that more and more, these tanks sweat a lot, so they're wet all, all the time. And again, in presence of time, I'm trying to go a little quicker than normal. The top has failed, the, the coating, this tank has not had any ongoing maintenance, so a lot of the stuff would have been caught and prevented and maintained over the years. But it, it's failed, so makes, this tank would be due for a paint job this year, and that's where we have a program. If we were to have, if we had another program, it would have been getting painted this year. You got some failure areas. All this stuff will be hand tool, power tool, spot prime, and overcoated, and it won't exist anymore, the tank will look brand new. There's some rust and corrosion on the beams, some failure points on a weld seam. There's the bottom of the bowl, on the catwalk. Some failure areas on the coatings, there's the railing, some failures. Rust and corrosion right there, with some coatings have delaminated. That's your logo, kind of hard to see from the ground, but it's completely peeled off. That's looking up top in the sidewall, we got a bad area there that would have been touched up and prevented from occurring. Now we're on the top. So you can kind of see that from the ground, you can see this just driving by, it's in pretty bad shape, it's got a lot, the coatings have failed, so that needs to basically be pressure washed, hand tool, power tool. In this case, this tank's getting a two coat because of the failures. It'll be a intermediate coat, and then a finish coat, and like I said, when we're all done, it'll be, it'll look brand new. There's the failures in the top dome. All right, real quick, so that's the pictures, I know it's fast and furious, and I want to talk a little bit about traditional model, which is what you're doing now compared to our full-service maintenance program. On the left is the traditional model, that's a broken, fragmented model. The reason I say that is because you've got an engineer involved, you've got a coating manufacturer involved, you've got a contractor, you've got an inspector. The bottom line, at the end of the day, it becomes a finger-pointing exercise, because nobody takes responsibility of what went wrong. Nobody's assumed risk and responsibility. On the right side is the American Tank Maintenance Full Service Maintenance Program. It's your tank, our problem, we assume all the risk and liability for maintaining the tank, and I'll get into those details here in a moment. Here's another comparison showing a traditional model, typical cycle on a water tank, life, life cycle is twelve years. So on, for example, a town tank, it needs to be painted now, inside and out. It's going to need to be painted again in twelve years. Under our maintenance program, we do it eight to ten, to maintain adhesion and cohesion qualities, we do the interiors in ten to twelve. You get washout inspections every year and preventative ongoing maintenance. You get visuals every year with preventative ongoing maintenance, emergency service, emergency repairs, and lifetime warranty. So anytime during that twelve-year cycle those coatings fail, we're fully responsible for that coating. The other thing is, when I program a, a future exterior, and I put it out in, say, year ten, if we're inspecting that tank in years five and six, and the coatings are starting to fail quicker than we expected, we're going to move that exterior up, or the interior, and it's not going to cost you a dime, your budget, your budgets don't change at all. We're fully responsible for that tank, and paint it when it needs to be painted, um, to keep it properly maintained. So benefits, we assume all the risk and liability for maintenance of the tank. Your inspections are done every year, washouts, ROVs, visuals, with detailed reports. The state loves our program. When they walk in here and say, and you say you're under maintenance program, they don't even look at the tanks. They take, tell Lamar, let's go look at something else, because I know your tanks are maintained, I know you have a report for every tank, I know you have renovation reports for every tank, and I know they're on a constant cycle for maintenance repair and ongoing, um, right, maintenance items, and, and paint. All your renovation costs, all the work that needs to be done, is spread out over eight years. We spread out over eight years, there's absolutely no cost and no fees to doing that, it's part of the maintenance program and the way it's built. Your fees are fixed for eleven years, okay, I'm going to show you that here in a moment, inflation is capped. Your future exteriors are built in every eight to ten years, interiors are built in every ten to twelve, that's the cycle. Ongoing maintenance and touch-up every year, emergency services, emergency repairs. So if something goes wrong with that tank, let's just say the ladder gate falls off, or a vent screen, and Lamar calls us, we mobilize a crew to come repair it, it doesn't cost you a dime. Somebody shoots a hole in it, somebody paints John Deere green, it's fully protected, okay? Doesn't cost you anything, because it's part of the maintenance program. Lifetime warranty, exterior, interior coatings and repairs. No engineering fees, this is a big one. There's, engineering fees can be very costly, anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent of the total project. We have no engineering fees, I have engineers on staff, this is what we do, we're passionate about what we do and how we do it, but we don't charge engineering fees. So that in itself is over eighty thousand dollars in savings. Set annual budget figure, I can show you today what you're going to be paying for the next thirty years if you really wanted to see it. No change orders, so we inspected the tanks, we know it needs to be done, so there are no change orders. The only thing that, the only caveat to that would be is if you change the logo or the paint color. Other than that, there's no change orders. Hassle-free tank maintenance for you, the citizens of Greensboro, and especially Lamar. Okay, here's the schedule of work and fees. So, this is just the, um, Mr. Mayor, do they have the, they have the overview that I sent you with pricing in or not?
No.
Okay, give me one sec, give me one sec. So it's the same chart you're looking at, except the fees are on it, okay? This breaks it down, so if you look at the west tank, the west tank's picked up as a base fee, okay? It is fixed, and it, it stays fixed for three years, and then inflates a bump, but it stays fixed for three more years, but there's no renovation cost worked into that. And the reason is, you can see where we expect the, the exterior to be done, we expect it to be in year eight and ten. Could fall earlier, but that's where our expertise tells us where it's going to fall based on its current condition and based on the history. The town tank, so anything in red is major renovations. Town tank has an exterior, interior right in front, needs to be done. The, uh, Home Depot tank has an exterior that needs to be done. The interior's in good shape, but we think it's going to need to be done in year four or fi- five, so it could move earlier. And then the east tank, like you saw with all the vines and the failings, we've put the exterior interior in year three. Okay, and the blue is washouts, the white is visual inspections, but through all, all of that, you're getting emergency services, emergency repairs, ongoing touch-up, and preventative maintenance. So here's an example of cost savings, this is the town tank, I want to show you something real quick, this is going to compare traditional model against our maintenance program. Okay, I know it's an eye chart, it's hard to see, but the town tank's almost two hundred thousand dollar renovation, okay? We are not charging you to renovate that tank, we're picking it up at a modified base fee. Almost as if you would have been on a maintenance program seven years ago, we're allowing you to kind of catch up, we're not charging you renovation costs. But I want to show you something, the traditional model, paint it now, paint it again in twelve years, throw it to inspections, the total over twelve years is five hundred and four thousand dollars. That's twelve years, that's painted now and painted again in twelve years. And that's only using three percent inflation, if I used anything more than three percent, it would be off the charts as far as the cost. Unfortunately, we're much higher than three percent right now. This is my maintenance program, you can see the fees are fixed for nine years. Yes, nine years, flat, there's no changes, those fees you see is the fees you're going to see in the agreement. Okay, and we're going to paint that tank inside and out in year one. Total twelve-year type package for that is three hundred and seventy-three thousand. It's a savings of a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars on one tank. And we're actually assuming all the risk and liability, we're fully responsible, the coatings now and later, washouts, repairs, everything that goes along with that tank. So you're saving a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars on one tank. So instead of doing that example for all of them, this is kind of a cost savings, all tanks, I call it my simple math chart. You wrap up all your tanks that need work, and this is for, you have four tanks, but this is only three tanks that need work. I'm only including that in the upfront renovation, because the west tank's a little different. You have five hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work that needs to be done. That future number for the same work becomes eight seventy-two, using three percent inflation twelve, thirteen years from now. Engineering fees plus a few inspections, you end up getting a total of one point six. My maintenance program for the same period of time, one point three, there's the numbers. Total cost, traditional is one point six, total cost of our maintenance program is one point three, it's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars savings for a maintenance program, and you're completely protecting your asset. You have three and a half to four million dollars, probably maybe a little bit more in assets on those tanks. Actually, probably a little more, because if you were to build a five hundred thousand gallon tank today, it's probably going to be borderline two million dollars. So benefits, we assume all the risk and liability from the tanks, they're your tank, they're our problem. No risk, you as the customer have absolutely no risk, you can cancel at any time, and you only owe for the work completed, okay? Annual inspections, washouts and visual with detailed reports, renovation costs are spread over eight years, fees are fixed for eleven, your inflation is capital four percent, okay? So it doesn't matter what happens fifteen years from now, if inflation is eight percent, you're still at four, you're completely protected. Significant, significant cost savings, I talked about that, three hundred and twenty-five thousand for all tanks over the life cycle. Future exteriors are built in, future interiors are built in, emergency services, emergency repairs, again, the lifetime warranty, you're completely protected. The lifetime warranty is critical, because the, the standard is one year, anybody can get paint stuck on a tank for one year. But it's that third year, that fourth year, that fifth year, if you start having failures, that can cost you a lot of money. Under our program, it's, you're completely protected. And if we deem it a big enough problem, we're going to bring in the coatings manufacturer, and if we have to paint the whole tank, we will paint the whole tank, okay? Again, here's the references, uh, I'm not willing to go over those again, but there's a lot of them. Why partner with us, establish and maintain long-term relationships? This is not a fire-and-forget kind of relationship, this is, we are responsible, that's a professional service, to maintain your tanks both short-term and long-term. Lamar has my number, I'm available twenty-four seven, and he knows that. And I'm available to anybody on this board twenty-four seven. Again, we maintain a thousand tanks in southeast, that number's only growing, and we've never had a program canceled. Your fees are spread out over eight years, fixed for eleven, so basically, your agreements, you will know what your fees are for eleven years, zero changes. Your first increase will be in year twelve, and it'll be basically capital four percent. Short-term, long-term savings, professional service, quality work. The bottom line is, we stand behind what we say and what we do, okay? We're very passionate about what we do, it's all we do is tank maintenance, we're focused on customer service. I would be your account manager, available twenty-four seven, and I know for a fact we can properly manage your tanks in timely and professional manner with the cost savings that I kind of went over. I talked fast and furious, it's a lot of information, Mr. Mayor, board members, any questions, any, any concerns?
Mrs. Hughes, I do have a few questions, um. The washout, is that, is that just cleaning out the tank, just washing out the tank?
So the washout will consist of basically Lamar draining that tank and taking it off, offline. Then our crew comes in and does a complete washout, we get all the sediment, all the debris out of the tank, it's pushed all out of the tank. We do touch-up on the interior, it's not a full paint job, but we touch up any kind of blemishes or areas to extend that coating a little bit, but to keep any rust from being exposed. And then we disinfect the tank, we seal it back up, and Lamar puts it back in. And then we disinfect the tank, we seal it back up, and Lamar puts it back in service. It's about, our piece is about a day, Lamar's piece is probably a total of three, by the time they drain it and get samples pulled.
So a washout, is that something that we're supposed to be doing annually?
In order to maintain a tank properly, yes, sir.
Another question, the lifetime warranty, what does that cover?
So as long as you're under a maintenance program, our maintenance program, we're responsible for those coatings. So if they have, we, let's just say we paint the town tank, and in two years, the leg starts peeling, and you call us, we're gonna come look at it. If we can't determine the cause, we're gonna get, we use teneb, 99.9% of the time, we're gonna have that representative come look at it, and we're gonna fix the problem. So if I have to paint a leg or the whole tank, you're completely protected. And we also move stuff earlier if it's failing prematurely. We can't always predict the lifetime of a coating. If it fails prematurely, we move it forward and we handle it. It doesn't change your budget lines or your responsibility financially whatsoever.
So at no extra cost, that's what you're saying? That's all I have, Councilman.
Yes, I have two questions. How long does the overcoat last?
Eight, 10 years on the exterior, and that's if you're maintaining it properly so that you can keep overcoating. The traditional way of doing business is to let them go 12 to 14 years and let them fail completely, okay? By failing completely, you just require yourself to contain the entire tank, blast it down to bare metal, and put a three-coat system. You just turned $150,000 renovation into $350,000 to $400,000, just because you chose to wait.
And my second one, I think I know the answer, but I wanna let a professional give me the answer. Uh, the town tank and the Home Depot tank. The town tank needs an exterior and an interior.
Correct.
Where the Home Depot only needs an exterior.
Correct.
But the town tank is gonna cost less, is that because the Home Depot tank is bigger?
The town tank?
The town tank is only $35,000. The Home Depot tank is $40,000, and it needs an exterior renovation, whip out in its space.
It is because it's bigger, significantly bigger. But we also came in and basically, we looked at the town tank, gave you a break on the town tank, and we did a modified base fee. You're not being charged a full renovation cost on that tank. We are basically absorbing that in a modified base fee. Think of it this way, if you would've put this tank on a maintenance program seven years ago, we're trying, or eight years ago, we're trying to allow you to catch up and pay today's fees plus the difference, and there's no renovation cost. So that's why there's a difference between that tank and the Home Depot tank. But the Home Depot tank is bigger.
Okay.
And it's all based on square footage. And you can break it down to total tank, no matter what size or style, square footage comes down to be almost the same number every time you do it.
Councilman Miller, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Good information.
Yes, sir, thank you.
But I have a question or two. My first question is, I looked on the screen and I saw a lot of neighboring counties that use your company. You say you're out of Edgerton, Georgia, right, Pottman County? Have you ever been in contact from the city of Greensboro for service?
Um, we have, over the past few years, we have.
My follow-up question would probably be to you, Mr. Manager. I'm not for sure what year it was, but it hadn't been 10 years. I know we did a lot of work at this town tank. We did a lot of work at the town tank, and it seemed like it needed more work than any of them. From, you talked fast, you know? I was trying to listen as you went.
It does. It's failed prematurely.
What?
It's the oldest tank.
It's also got the most amount of paint on it, but it has failed prematurely. And there's various reasons for that, but it has failed. The Home Depot tank, in theory, should've been painted around 13 years, about four years ago. But you're fortunate that it's lasted this long, because normally, when you see a coating that's 17 years old, it has to be blasted down to bare metal. But you're fortunate that that tank can be overcoating, and we're comfortable overcoating the town tank. But we're gonna, a lot of that stuff's gonna be coming off. When I say coming off, zero tip, or 4,000 PSI is kind of a zero-tip pressure washer, it's gonna be knocking paint off, and it's gonna basically be redone.
And your maintenance program, if we decide to go with this maintenance program, is it year-to-year or?
So it's considered an Evergreen agreement. It is a year-to-year type thing, and in there, it talks about if you were to cancel, you go for the work that's been completed to date. That's why there's no risk for you. You can cancel the agreements at any time. But it goes back to my other point, is we've never had a program canceled, and there's a reason for that.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Smith?
No, sir.
Councilman Neil?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for all of your information. We'll be getting back with you.
Thank you very much.
Council, we don't have to take a vote on that tonight. I'll let you guys digest the information that we received tonight. We'll get back to you. Next on the agenda, Larry, you said number six, Ms. Chilum is not here, is that correct?
Correct.
So numbers, we're down to number seven on the agenda, Ms. Mamie Hill, with some neighborhood
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for assisting the residents with the cleanup, you know, getting rid of debris and clutter in their yard. I appreciate that. I know it's quite costly, but I honor and celebrate you all for making that decision. I left you a little flyer about an activity that we have coming up at the African-American camp, and that is my challenge, okay? We have, our neighborhoods are pretty much not completely African-American neighborhoods anymore. And we have others coming in, which is fine, but be benefiting the community, okay? Now, free range chickens, I don't know what your law or whatever with the chickens, but the chickens are messing on the porches, digging holes under the house, laying eggs in front of the door. It's not cute. And, you know, you got tourists coming in the yard, and they step in and chicken poop. They have a little dog out there, and he think he the mascot of the neighborhood, 'cause he walk around like he owns it, okay? And that's not good. Personally, I think it's not good. And I know we all don't think the same thoughts or whatever, but I feel that a lot of assumptions have been made by others about us as African-Americans. Like, we don't like decent neighborhoods. We don't want order in our neighborhoods, which is a lot, because the previous owners of those houses struggled, strained, and obtained that property, took care of that property, and now it's not a cutie. Because you can take anyone at any time to get used to looking at things that's out of order for so long until they become normal to them. And we teach, as leaders, we teach about what we do. You know, our kids are looking at us, other family members are looking at us, and above all, this community needs to be better, because we're here. And we have the opportunity to birth spiffiness, change, and beautiful colors, okay? And my challenge, like I say, is the chickens and the dog, and the clutter. And I know there are rules and regulations in communities about cars that are not working that are junked up in somebody's yard. We need to begin to address these issues, because it's not getting any better. The eye gates of our city need to be spiffy, and you come through the eye gate by the cemetery. That's a hot mess. You know, I know people don't care about dead people once they're under the ground, but that's not cute. The people in the lost, they litter all over the place. And you got people coming in on that road, looking at the city of Greensboro, not thinking that we are cute people. And we are. And we need to do something to address it. And I've talked to your guy that works in coating for him, he started a process. I have not heard from him again. And he needs to be, whomever, they need to be visiting these neighborhoods and looking at the clutter, looking at the litter. And I know about litter. 25 years ago, I started in the railroad, picking up trash with those beautiful kids out there. They're adults now, but we picked up litter every year. Not because I have property out there, not because I have family out there, 'cause I grew up in White Plains. My only tie to the railroad is that my uncle was shot in the head in 1945 and laid on the railroad track in that historical home. That's my tie to the community. And I know others have invested in that. Your predecessors have invested in those neighborhoods. We need to clean them up, we need to abide by the code enforcement that's on the books. We need to become actively engaged in that. And a lot of people are not gonna report other folks about junk in the yard or whatever, 'cause they just don't care. We live in a world that people, most of the time, don't give a flip. And we can't tolerate that. If we are to sustain those neighborhoods, then we are to, to show appreciation to your constituents. Anything regarding the city must be better, because you're here, I'm here. So that's my little thing today, is that the chickens and the dogs, and I don't have a problem with chickens, but they need to be contained in a pen or something and not all over the neighborhood. So I've been here before. So we'll see what happens, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And if you're in the neighborhood, visit us, and I appreciate it. And I love and honor you all.
Thank you so much.
But you're all a cutie. So I hope to see some results. If not, I'll be back.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, so cute.
You as well. City Manager, can you make sure we address those owners of those chickens and the dogs that are on Northeast Street? As early as tomorrow, City Manager. Next on the agenda, City Manager, authorization to open up a bank account for speed camera
Yes, um, the, uh, there's some specific laws on speed cameras and how the fines are accounted for. Unlike a lot of things we do, they're gonna need a, the way the legislature set it up, we're gonna need a separate bank account, and it has to be spent solely on law enforcement. So I'll need to open up its own bank account.
All right, I entertain a motion and a second to give City Manager permission to open up a bank account for speed camera fines.
Motion.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Questions? Uh, no problem with opening the account, but what's the timeline on it?
Tomorrow. Is there a list tomorrow?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
No further questions, although in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. You had us to see you. Thank you so much. Brings us down to number nine, unfinished business. Uh, City Manager?
Yes, sir.
There's a, I don't wanna say a pothole, but I know we did some work on Northeast Street repairing a water leak. Do you have any timeline on where we'll be getting that spot fixed in the middle of the road?
Northeast Street.
Northeast Street.
Um, I think we get a break in the weather. Johnny's busy, but let me see if I can get some cold patch in it, and then we'll do a permanent fix, maybe in the next week, week or two.
Yeah. Cold patch is just temporary.
Right.
Is there any way we can go permanent before we go cold patch?
Johnny's pretty full up with all of the cleanup day stuff, but I'll see if he can break away tomorrow.
So our crew will be doing the permanent fix, that's what I'm asking.
Will.
Or do we have to call somebody else?
Yeah, we have to coordinate with the asphalt companies. They don't run every day, so we can only get it when they're running for a bigger job. They won't start the asphalt plant just for us. They need to be paving something, so it's just basically coordinate with them and the weather as well.
All right, well, let's get a cold patch in there. Make sure, as soon as we can get it fixed permanently, make sure we do it. That's all I have. Councilman Moore, do you have anything unfinished?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager, do you have any unfinished business?
No, sir.
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I want an executive session to discuss one litigation matter.
One legal matter. Councilman Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Smith? Councilman Neil?
No, sir.
You know what? I do have some. It can be unfinished or new. I'll bring this up. Uh, Council, there's, I know we, during the past, we've actually gave out raises during the first part of the year, which would be a cost of living. I think I maxes, what, anywhere from 3%?
Usually agree. I max is five.
I max is five, anywhere from 3% to 5%. City Manager, same. What I would like to do this year, to see if it's okay with you all, when our new City Manager comes in in May, I'd like to do a, an analysis to see if we're even competitive. Councilman Moore and I sat in a meeting on last Tuesday, rehearsed the numbers, that was kind of striking to us. So what I wanted to, and I know it's an elephant in the room, people, I see our employees have been saying they haven't been given their raises yet. So is it okay if we wait until our City Manager comes in, we do this analysis to see if we have competitive prices or competitive salaries? Would you all like to go ahead and give the 3% cost of living now?
I want to make sure we're competitive. I will give the raise, but I want to make sure they're competitive.
Okay. Anybody else?
Everybody.
Councilman Miller?
Uh, I have no problem with waiting if we think it gonna be beneficial, real beneficial. I mean, they done went a year going on three months, four months without any cost of living, and I just don't want it prolonging that much longer, you know? I have no problem, I know the first of May will be within a month. I hope our new City Manager will have that analysis when he get here, and maybe we could look at it in the middle part, latter part of May at least. Not wait till June, July, and then the fifth of the year, end of October, start the new fifth of the year. But I have no problem with waiting, see, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Smith?
I have no problem with it. I think it'd be a great chance. I know a lot of employees have been talking about it, but when you look at 3%, anything is better than, you know, nothing. But it's a possibility that you have some of the guys that, uh, may, you know, they said it's a possibility they could get $2 to $3 more, what we're looking at, just to put that out in the public, so it won't be saying that we don't want to give it a raise. It's just that everybody is having the cost of living throughout, not just the county, but you know, it's a worldwide thing right now. So again, I'd rather get him a possibility of $2, $3 in certain departments or certain individuals than you compare to get him $0.50 or $0.75, you know, we still won't be going nowhere. Um, that's my take on this, man.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. I don't have any more new business. Councilman Moore, do you have any new business?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager?
Yes, sir. I have two requests from Festival Hall for beer and wine. The first one is May 11th, or actually, the first one is April, April 20th. It's Lake Country Chorus Production of singing seven days a week, and all the proceeds benefit Festival Hall. The second is May the 11th. It's for Jazz Legacy Project, Art Lachley, the father of modern jazz, and all the proceeds benefit Festival Hall.
Council, you've heard the request come from the City Manager, Danielson motion now to accept the request.
Mr. Mayor, I would accept the request and make a motion for May 11th and April 20th.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion, although in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Brings us down to, I'm sorry, Councilman Miller, any new business?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager, I skipped over you. Any new... City Manager, I skipped over you, any new business? I mean, City Attorney, I'm sorry. Councilman Smith?
No, sir.
Councilman Neal?
I have one, Larry, what's going with our animal control and where we at with, is Charles still a clover?
He's been moved to the sewer wastewater facility.
Okay, so what we going to do about animal?
We need to build a shelter, what we need.
Okay.
So, so it's a possibility to the building that we got at the back of this city hall right now? Is it possible that we can get some cages and stuff and just run that? Because, I mean, we getting a lot of calls, I don't know about you guys, but I know we getting a lot of call about stray dogs and pit bulls and different dogs inside the community. And I talked to Mr. Brean at the time, was running it, we didn't have a location to send the dog. So they're really putting the citizen in a bad place. So is it possible that we can get a few cages to go down at the bottom and run that temporarily until we can?
We can't open it until, it, it's been inspected by the Department of Agriculture, and it needs runs. So we need somebody that can do a build out and put in some runs for the dogs out the back, and we have to put in air conditioning as well. And we need to insulate it.
There's a lot of red flag that goes into starting even a temporary.
Just for temporary?
Yeah.
So I mean, we might try to get in contact with the county and put something in motion with them to see what they housing for a while. I mean, because we haven't probably had citizens come up talking about dogs and stuff out in the community. If they get hot, kids can be getting out of school and, you know, out in the community more, and that's the last thing I would want is for a kid or a citizen or either some people coming out of town to get hurt. And the reason why, because we don't have to place the housing, or have any kind of partnership or relationship with someone who we house. So that's something that we can try to start working on?
Well, that option is not on the table. The county has made it perfectly clear that they do not want to work with the city with animal control. So the only option that we do have, we, we can either build a facility that will probably cost us, what, five hundred? Five hundred thousand, or we can try to renovate that which we have there would probably cost us about three hundred thousand.
And it's still not a overnight.
Yeah.
I mean, the only other option would be to see temporarily until we decide what we're going to do with ours and see if there's another municipality that will possibly do an intergovernmental agreement with us. But yeah, that ship with the county is sailed.
And so then, even, even if we went into an agreement with a different municipality, we have to pay that individual to travel back and forth, and have to be somebody that's, that's becoming.
I have a question.
So, no, no, you're right, I'm sorry. So, uh, they get confused, so we have a citizen that called and said, hey, we have an issue with a dog. What do we do? Because we don't have any agreement with no surrounding city, the county, not wanting to work with us, so what, what, like, how are we going to handle a situation like that?
That's what we're trying to figure out now, Councilman. Councilman Smith?
Well, they notified us in September that they were going to cancel the agreement, right? I guess we are where we are, right? And where we at with the, with the, with State of Joy, we had to come and comply, where we at with that?
For, for the audits?
Yeah.
Still sort of stands still.
Picking back a little bit, Mr. Mayor, from Councilman Smith bringing it up. Since Mr. Brean been moved, moved over to, you said, the Water Department?
Wastewater.
Wastewater Department, so we don't even have anybody to even do anything with us with stray dogs, mean dogs, stray cats, or whatever.
He wasn't doing anything?
Yeah.
Boy's dogs, anyway, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
That's all I got.
It was a tough decision, but.
That's something we need to try to.
Councilman Miller, you, you said some weren't popular, yeah, that's where we are. Either, either we pay a guy to ride around all day, or we move him to, to do something else.
Somebody need to figure something out.
All right, brings us down to number eleven, public comment.
Public comment? No, sir, nobody signed up.
All right, it is time I entertain a motion to move into executive session for one legal matter.
Motion.
It's been second, no further discussion. Although in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand.